Welcome to the council and committee of the whole meeting for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Nous sommes venus à notre réunion de conseil pour le onze juillet. We will open the meeting with our land acknowledgement provided to us this evening by councillor Rivard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we meet today, I would like to take a moment to recognize the importance of the land which we are gathered. The municipality of West Nipissing respectfully acknowledges that we are located on the homelands of the Anishinaabe peoples, on the traditional territory of the Nipissing, Tamagami, and Dokeys First Nations, covered by the Robinson-Heron Treaty. We honor and recognize their historical connection to the land and value their significant contributions in shaping and strengthening our communities. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility towards those, towards reconciliation and improving our understanding of local indigenous peoples and their cultures.
Thank you. Mr. President, I will take any declarations of pecuniary interest, seeing none. You'll have in front of you a revised agenda that was published earlier today. It encompasses some addendums that were added, as well as removing two items from the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. The first being the proposed by law update for camping trailers, and the second one being the dumping station for recreational vehicles. Both those items will be moved forward to the August fifteenth meeting. And you have a motion on?
It is moved by councillor Palery and seconded by councillor Edward Rivard. Be it resolved that the addendum for the meeting of council held on July the eleventh, twenty twenty-three be approved as presented.
All those in favor? Carry it.
It is moved by councillor Rivard and seconded by councillor Palery. Be it resolved that the agenda for the meeting of council held on June the eleventh, twenty twenty-three be approved as presented.
All those in favor? Carry it. First item on the agenda for this evening, we have a delegation regarding the reopening of municipal office in Burner. And presenting this evening will be Monsieur Debienn and Mr. Lewington. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I will do the initial opening in French, and then Dave Lewington will add at the end, okay? Madame la mère est chère conseiller et conseillère. En un premier temps, j'aimerais remercier le Conseil Municipal de Nipissing West de nous permettre de vous entretenir sur les propos pour justifier de remettre un bureau municipal dans le village de Burner. Permettez-moi de me présenter. Je m'appelle Robert Lebien, et je suis résident de la communauté de Burner depuis mille neuf cent soixante-dix. Comme vous savez sans doute, il existe toujours l'espace disponible dans l'édifice municipal existant par acquis dès cette installation. La population de Burner en est une qui est vieillissante, donc je suis la preuve. Qu'est-ce qui entraîne certaines difficultés pour les déplacements, l'accès aux services en ligne, même si il existe pour la plupart des gens d'un certain âge? Le nombre de contribuables qui ont pris le temps de signer la petition pour demander que ce bureau soit ouvert de nouveau est la preuve tangible que le besoin est important et voulu par les gens de cette communauté. Avant l'amalgamation de la communauté à la municipalité de Nipissing West, on avait assuré la population de Burner que les services seraient pas diminués ni retirés. Pendant plusieurs années, ce fut le cas, mais peu à peu, les services ont été centralisés à Sturgeon Falls, sans aucune concitation de la population de cet endroit. Les contribuables de Burner sont une source importante de financement pour le Nipissing West. Les infrastructures ne leur reflètent pas et maniennent à des développements potentiels dans notre communauté. La qualité de l'eau est un exemple frappant qui ne semble faire aucune place à la table du conseil. Car les employés municipaux disent que les gens se plaignent rarement de cette situation. Autre preuve qu'ils ne savent pas ou pas aller porter leur plainte. En ayant un bureau municipal de nouveau à Burner, le conseil aurait des oreilles sur place et pourra mieux s'emmener et réagir aux préoccupations de leurs contribuables. Le manque de services à notre règne avec un manque de cantine et l'utilisation de la salle de la reine en sont aussi des exemples d'un manque de développement communautaire. Les membres de la communauté sont fiers de leur appartenance à la communauté Nipissing West, mais veulent aussi se sentir comme des égaux et se faire respecter dans les instances décisionnelles. J'aimerais vous remercier pour votre écoute, et je souhaite que vous preniez le temps de bien réfléchir sur ces propos. À ce moment, j'aimerais céder la parole à Dave Lewington, qui apportera sa contribution à cette présentation. Merci.
Hello, Madam Mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and for receiving a delegation on this issue. To build on what Bob said, I believe that the issue of not reopening the Burner office is not a budgetary issue. As far as I'm aware, the staff person who used to work there was simply moved to Sturgeon Falls. So it was not necessarily a cost savings issue, and therefore it wouldn't be an increased expense to reopen the office in Burner. We also have the experience of a number of staff working either at home or at other locations during COVID. And I think therefore that shows us that we can have staff not working here in Town Hall always all at the same time. There are, I have a couple of specific issues or stories that relate to me that will, hopefully, will describe why it's important to decentralize staff just a little bit from the main building in Town Hall here. And one is actually my own example of calling in a drainage issue, trying to get a municipal ditch cleared up. And I had called several times, and finally, when the poor lady who answered the phone, and I actually got a hold of them, she went through the system of logging and said, "We have a log of your call on this date, on this date, on this date. It was urgent on this date," and that's all we've done. So when you have a big bureaucracy, those things get lost. If you have one person in Burner who is responsible more so to make sure that the person coming through that door either knows how to navigate the bureaucracy, or that their complaint gets resolved or looked after, that can turn that into a positive and a way to help residents actually get the things done that they expect from their local government. There, there's another example where a, a fire chief had offered a resignation, and it was brought into Town Hall and requested that it be passed on to mayor and council. And that did not happen, and eventually, the fire chief ended up wanting to support the limited volunteers that were left in his community, and he went back. And I think if we have a smaller office in satellite locations, then those people, again, they're a little closer to the community that they serve, and they're more apt to make sure that they get that message passed up the chain to the people that should be receiving it. I, I think that, like, the, the many complaints about resolved issues are bound to happen in a municipality that is geographically so big as, as what West Nipissing is. But the way you can turn that into a positive, or work to turn it into a positive, is by putting someone back into the office in Burner and making sure that that person knows that they are there to help represent those residents and bring the message to all of you so that you guys and gals are not missing those messages. Because if you don't get the message, it's hard for you to ask. So I, I think those are a number of reasons why, and why it would be a good idea to reinstate that position at the office of Burner. And I think both Bob and I are looking forward to hearing your discussion and any comments and questions.
Thank you very much to both of you. Merci beaucoup. I will open the, the floor to members of council after any questions of our presenters this evening. However, the, the, any debate about the actual what's being put forward, go forward to the next meeting of council when staff has an opportunity to prepare a report. I'd also like to thank you both and acknowledge the petition that was received prior to this delegation. I can't recall the date that we received it at the meeting, but we do acknowledge that that has been received with the signatures of, of many residents. And I do thank you for putting the time in to, to organize that. Do we have any questions from our members this evening? Councillor Rivard?
Madam Mayor, I guess I would just ask if, if perhaps I looked like Monsieur Debienn, you were, you had a prepared speech there. I wouldn't mind if you guys were able to send that over, then I'd be able to read over it again.
Sure, well, of course, we have been a little bit, no problem.
Oh, I mean, through email, if you like.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like, that's fine, too.
Sure.
Thanks.
You want it more logical?
Yeah.
Thanks.
That would be great. And you, Mr. Lewington, as well, if you have any notes for, of your presentation, if you can present that, we can make sure that that's included in the package of information for next council. And Monsieur Debienn, je comprends français un peu, mais pour moi, c'est un plus facile à lire les informations to make sure that I bought everything, and same with councillor Nichol. So, you know, I, I was following along fairly well, but I do want to make sure that, that we consider all of the points that you presented. So I do want to make sure that.
I can talk to my translator so I can get your translation.
Oh, I can throw it in good both translating. I'm a pro. Any other questions from our councillors this evening? Okay, with that, I thank you again very much for your presentation, for coming out to, to give that information. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We're moving into committee of the whole, and first up is general government. Item five point one point one, we have an integrity commissioner report to be presented by our integrity commissioner, Mr. Paul Tessin, who is on with us via Zoom this evening. Mr. Cassin, I'd like to welcome you to the meeting, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you very much, your worship. Do you wish me to present the report now?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. Has everybody received a copy of the report?
No. We're printing it now, Paul.
Oh, all right. So I'll, I'll go over it. I'm not going to read to counsel yours. Any of the members have questions, I'm happy to answer them. So this is the first complaint that I received as your integrity commissioner. I received a complaint on May the second from a ratepayer complaining that councillor Pellerin signed a petition which was against a decision that was made by council in what's known as Resolution twenty twenty-three slash one ten. Now, that is the decision that council made with respect to moving people around on committees and local boards. And specifically, the issue in question was the removal of councillor Tessier from the O Chateau board. So this complaint, so that council is clear, really doesn't have anything to do with the merits of or the decision of the council with respect to assigning councillors to various boards. The complaint, to be precise, is that councillor Pellerin signed a petition after council had decided on who was going to be on what board. And so the complaint was made by a ratepayer. The ratepayer has asked to remain anonymous, and I don't see a good reason to not grant that request. I think it is important for council to know that it is not a member of council and it is not a member of staff who made the complaint. So in my report, which you'll see and which becomes public, I go over the mandate where I was appointed by council in bylaw twenty twenty-three of sixteen. I discuss the passing of the resolution, and so I'll, I'll, I'll deal with that briefly. So the resolution was passed on April the fourth of twenty twenty-three. I looked at the, at the agenda to see that it was properly on the agenda. I looked at the notice to see that it was a proper public meeting, and so I was confident in finding that the passing of Resolution twenty twenty-three slash one ten was done properly. And the reason that's important is that council operates the, what we call the third level of government, the municipal government, and the decisions of council become law. That's important for council to understand and appreciate, as well as the ratepayers of West Nipissing. So when council made the decision with respect to the assignment of councillors on, on the various boards, that becomes the law. And so I know that councillor Pellerin and councillor Tessier voted against the resolution, but it passed as a seven to two resolution, and that became the decision of council. So, as I indicated, I received a complaint on May the second of twenty twenty-three, complaining that councillor Pellerin signed a petition. And part of the problem that we have here is that the language of the petition is disrespectful of council's decision. It's disrespectful of the councillors who sit on the O Chateau board and who have sat on the O Chateau board, including councillor Pellerin himself. It's disrespectful to him. And the petition called upon municipal council to essentially change the position that they arrived at. So that petition asks for a reversal of council's decision in Resolution twenty twenty-three of one ten. So after I got the complaint, I looked at it, and I provided councillor Pellerin with a notice laying out the essence of the complaint. I provided that on May the tenth. I also provided him with a copy of Resolution twenty twenty-three of one ten. I provided him with a copy of the Code of Conduct and a copy of the Procedure Bylaw. So I set up a meeting with councillor Pellerin. Councillor Pellerin is the only party that I interviewed with respect to this matter. I did speak to staff a little bit to obtain the procedure information that I was looking for. And councillor Pellerin finally met with me on May the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Now, I want to recall that this decision was early in the term. This petition signing happened before I attended at council and did some training with council. And that's relevant for the decision that I eventually made. So councillor Pellerin was very cooperative with me when we had our interview. And I learned that he is a first-term councillor. He indicated to me that he signed the petition at a local business. It was important for me to learn that councillor Tessier did not ask councillor Pellerin to sign the petition. And councillor Tess, councillor Pellerin does not believe that she was involved in the petition at all. He admits that he signed the petition. He admits that he knows that the reassignment of councillors to the boards was a councillor decision, but he indicated to me that he voted against it, which I, I had, I had watched the recording of the meeting, so I already was aware of that. So we discussed what, what should be done and what could be done further. And so he knows now that he could seek advice from the integrity commissioner before we're taking a step like this to his ethical obligations as a councillor. And I want the rest of council to be aware of that, that if you ever get into a situation like this where there's some question about what you should do with respect to your obligations under the Code of Conduct, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the council staff relations policy, or even the Procedure Bylaw, certainly you can ask Mr. Barbo if he has any assistance for you, but you can always ask me for advice, and many members of council have already done that, your worship. And I'd like you to know that they're taking advantage of that resource, which I commend council for. And we had essentially a bit of an education discussion at the end of our interview. And we talked about the fact that councillors are definitely supposed to debate issues in open council. Their job is to convince other members of council to vote alongside their opinion. And that's where the debate disagreement is supposed to happen. But the Code of Conduct then requires, once a council decision has been made, all members of council have an obligation to support that decision. And it doesn't matter whether you agreed with it or you didn't agree with it. As a member of council, once that decision is made, you have an obligation to support and put forward that position. So previous council enacted a Code of Conduct in twenty nineteen. It governs the ethical conduct of members of council. It requires members of council to be familiar with and comply with the Procedure Bylaw, among other things. And so as members of council, it is important that you read and understand the Procedure Bylaw. And if you have any questions about it, certainly, Mr. Barbo or Melanie could, could assist you with that. The Code of Conduct requires at section six that members respect the decision-making process and that they show respect for the decision-making process in council or committees, whether they agree or not. I suppose it's important to emphasize that this code also applies to committees. The Procedure Bylaw is essentially adopted into the Code of Conduct. And so the Procedure Bylaw is mandated by section two thirty-eight of the municipal act, and you do have a Procedure Bylaw that details how your meetings will be called and how issues go. And it's important for members of council to understand that there is a process called reconsideration laid out in the Procedure Bylaw. And so if council has made a decision, and then members of council decide that that might not have been the right decision, there is a process in section fifteen point one one, and I'm not going to go through the process, but there is a process for members of council to put forward a motion to reconsider that issue. And if councillor Pellerin had an issue, or any member of council had an issue with the decision in Resolution twenty twenty-three of one ten, then the proper way to resolve that would have been to attempt to reconsider the decision, but that was not done. So as I've indicated, I did not look at the merits of Resolution twenty twenty-three of one ten. I looked specifically at whether it was properly decided and passed, and I find that it was. So with respect to my findings and my decision, and then recommendations for council, it's important for members of council and the ratepayers of West Nipissing to understand that members of council are voted into a position of influence and power within a municipality. And frankly, that position involves sacrifice. And what I mean by that is certain rights that members of the public would have with respect to freedom of speech and, and freedom of opinion are in fact given up by members of council when they assume the role as a councillor. And so part of the responsibility as a councillor is to follow the policies and the laws of the municipality. The legislature amended the municipal act and required municipalities to have an integrity commissioner, required them to have a Code of Conduct, because the legislature was of the belief that members of municipal councils were not behaving in a manner appropriate for the responsibility of the level of government. And so they put those requirements in, and, and those requirements for the Code of Conduct for the integrity commissioner for following the rules apply to all councils in the province, whether you're a councillor for the city of Toronto or the city of Ottawa, the municipality of West Nipissing, or some of the smallest municipalities in the province. All members of council are held to the same responsibility. And that's because governing a municipality is, it's not a business, it's not a social club, it's not a recreation. You're actually making law that affects and governs the, the lives of your ratepayers. And so the provincial legislature is requiring you to follow the rules diligently. So councillor Pellerin did participate in a petition to change Resolution twenty twenty-three slash one ten. This was not respectful of the council decision-making process. It was not supporting the decision of council, and it was also disrespectful of the members who give their time to sit on boards and committees, in this case, the O Chateau board. And so in this manner, I find that councillor Pellerin did breach section two and section six of the Code of Conduct. Now, in the circumstances, I'm not recommending any penalty for councillor Pellerin. And the reasons that I'm not recommending any penalty is that this took place early in the term, before training took place. Councillor Pellerin was cooperative with me, was very open and honest, and admitted what had happened. And we had a good discussion about what should happen in a situation like this. I believe that an integrity commissioner's role is more importantly education for members of council and assisting the municipality to move forward in a proper legally compliant ethical manner. And I don't think that councillor Pellerin deserves to have a penalty for this. I think this is a learning experience for him and for all members of council. And so I'm not recommending that council impose penalties on councillor Pellerin for this. I do think that I do think that some further governance training is wise for council to do. And I think I'd like to come down and do some more training with you at some point in the future. I think this training should be spaced out over the term of council. Because I've had members of council that I've trained say, you know, I heard you do the training at the beginning, and then I heard you do almost the same training two years later. And it meant a wholly different thing because I've sat in the seat for two years. So I would like to come down maybe in the fall and do some further training. I think that would be more beneficial to council and the municipality as a whole. And so in the circumstances, I'm not recommending any penalty. Now, that being said, if members of council after this and after the the training that we've had continue not to support and to subvert decisions of council, my recommendation will be for a much more serious penalty. But in these circumstances, I think that this matter, I think that council should accept the report. My advice to council is generally that they don't vote on penalties the same day that the report is presented, so that you've got some time to look at it and think about it. But I don't see that a penalty is going to be helpful in the circumstances. So, your worship, that's the summary of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, if you have any.
Thank you very much, Mr Cassan, for taking the time to do a thorough investigation on the complaint. And also, your approach to acting as our integrity commissioner is appreciated. I share the same thoughts as you as far as it being a very educational role, especially when working with council that has so many new and inexperienced members. You know, I think we all have a lot to learn about, you know, how we do what we're supposed to be doing well and how we do it at play and how we do it in a way that is respectful of our colleagues and respectful of the different policies. So I do appreciate your report and the work that went into it. I will open the floor for questions from our members to Mr Cassan. And I would take Mr Cassan's advice with your permission to bring the report back to be formally accepted by council at the next meeting, at which time we can discuss the recommendations. But in the meantime, if any of the members have questions in regards to this matter, please feel free. I don't see any hands over here, Mr Cassan. So councillor Pellerin?
Yeah, thank you, my dear. Yeah, I had a good discussion with Mr Cassan. It was a different meeting than I thought I would have. It was pleasant. I did disagree on some points with Mr Cassan. We agreed to disagree. That's about it. And if you do come in the hall, if you do have a report, can we get it in advance? Please.
I would generally provide reports in advance. When I'm coming in the fall, I would anticipate that I'm coming for an education session, so I probably wouldn't give you the the slide deck in advance because I want to discuss it with you. But I mean, if council wishes me to provide the education material in advance, I can do that for sure.
It's easier. It's easier to get the stuff in advance because every time they ask, have you got any question? And we just have to report that same night. It's pretty hard for me anyway to get the questions and we just have the report. You know what I mean?
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Cassan. Any other questions? Before we close the slide? Seeing none. Thank you again, Mr Cassan, and I'm sure hopefully be in touch. I will just say I do appreciate the fact that that we do have members of council reaching out for advice in advance in a preemptive way, because I think that is one of the most important functions of the integrity commissioner. So it's really encouraging to hear that. So thank you. Thank you again for your time.
Oh, thank you, and have a great summer.
Okay, thank you. You too.
If I may be excused, your worship, I think that's my last matter.
You will. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. The next item on the agenda in general government is a Federation of Canadian Municipalities membership. There is a gender request item and some supporting information in your package. I did submit this after my attendance at the FCM conference that took place at the end of May. And I learned that since two thousand and eighteen, we were no longer members. I found the conference and the information provided opportunities and a real difference between the kind of provincial level advocacy and the federal level advocacy. Interesting. And so I'm bringing this back to council. There is a staff report included from Mr Barbo. Did you want to speak on that?
Thank you, your worship. It was prepared by our director of corporate services. But to summarize, the director has provided the advantages as per the FCM materials and promotional materials as to what benefits are for being a member of FCM. And I believe the council has received the report with their original package, and I would just leave that to you if there are any questions.
I'll open it up to the floor. There is, including the material is the cost for something like that. I mean, I know in the past, obviously, we were members, and then we weren't members. So where does that money come from? And does that pose a budget challenge as far as if council were to approve? You know, where? Where? Because is there money somewhere in the mirrors?
So every non-budgeted expense poses a budget challenge. I spoke to with you, Madam Mayor, on a situation for a very small amount, and I had to call the financial gatekeeper, you know, to discuss it. But certainly, you know, it really would depend on when the bill is requested. And I believe, what would the fee be Miss Craddock for this year if you were the occupant?
Yeah, so I actually don't have the current year fee. It was about thirty-two hundred dollars in two thousand and eighteen. So thirty-two hundred dollars in two thousand and eighteen.
So if it's anything like our capital, it's that's a joke. So no, so in the range of thirty-five hundred, that probably wouldn't impact our budget.
Anybody have questions in regards to that item? Councillor Hart?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure who this would be directed to, but there was a reason it was, I guess, we stopped our membership. Was there any, I guess, lack of value that council was seeing or staff was seeing? So is that why?
Well, through you, Madam Mayor, if that's directed to me, obviously, you know, there's two, you know, competing issues. You know, the issue of networking and belonging to a variety of organizations and associations overall theoretically philosophically is beneficial when you get information. So we are members of a variety of organizations such as the Northern Ontario Association, which has local Northern Ontario needs. We are members of rural municipalities, which obviously we fall into that and it gives us that bent. We are also members of AMO, which basically is the municipalities of Ontario, and that gives us that Ontario flavor. We are creatures of the province of Ontario, and therefore that's the majority of it. When you get into FCM, you're getting into higher level issues where the issues are more esoteric. The FCM is very very supportive of green, environmental, and have, you know, much, you know, greater, higher level strategic issues. It's also the largest network. And so what you would have is the ability to network and participate with a variety of challenges where you may not be getting the same kind of cookie cutter information that you would be getting from the Ontario municipalities. When you're getting best practices from Alberta or PEI, you know, that could really enhance your, you know, your value. And so from a trying to control cost perspective, to answer your question, and looking for the philosophy of the council of the day, the council of the day probably wasn't looking in the same strategic manner, not suggesting they weren't, but they were looking more as a fiscal savings than a strategic return on investment for information received. I hope that answers your question, councillor Biewer. No? Well, I don't want to speak for a bad council. You made a bad mistake or a great mistake, a great decision.
I guess what I missed in the first question to you, Madam Mayor, would be, I know like the the federal government, the legislation more towards, you know, they've got some higher level things, like airports, railway, rail channel, things like that. Provincial, we definitely have a lot more. Right, a lot more legislation that comes provincially that we have to follow. So I was just wondering if maybe that's kind of, but I think you answered it. It's difficult. Thanks.
Questions?
Yes, we're just here. So through you, Madame. Yes, this subscription is from, I guess, from is it March to April or April to March? Like, it's already kind of started?
Right.
So kind of three months in. And also just to kind of, along with Mr Revard's comment is this is mostly like federally, so the benefits of the funding that we would be able to possibly look for applies to what area, like for examples? Because Ontario, we know.
Directed to me?
To, not sure.
Well, I believe that Miss Craddock's memo speaks to some of the funds that they, that FCM, from our perspective, have been known for. And they're really known for the Green Fund and environmental sustainability type projects, the Green Municipal Enabling Fund I'm reading here, a Green Municipal Investment Fund. And so there's those types of funding. I'm not a hundred percent sure you need to be a member to belong to that or to participate in that. Again, I think that, you know, regardless of applying to AMO or being a member of AMO, those funds, I believe, we would have we'd have the opportunity to have. I believe the issue is more from a more, and I think the Americans speak to it probably better than I can. I'm an administrator that basically runs a corporation, you know, with the philosophical direction of council. The mayor attended FCM this year and found a different bent than the other conferences such as Roma or OGRA. So perhaps the mayor could speak to what she saw during the conference instead of me.
Yeah. You know, I would say for me, attending the FCM conference was interesting in the fact that the matters on which the advocacy is done by FCM to the federal government is very different than the provincial government. So one of the main focuses for their advocacy right now revolves around changing the kind of funding structure model that comes from the federal government, so how the federal government supports municipalities. Right now, it seems to be, it's kind of keystone, it's done on funding programs. We either have to find projects in our community that meet what their funding objectives are, or we need to wait until the right funding program comes around. And so some of the advocacy on the part of FCM comes in trying to convince the federal government that municipalities actually need a sustainable, reliable source of funding that is not based just on if special programs or projects, the money needs to come in. So when you look at the advocacy that they're doing, it's very different than the advocacy done on the provincial level because it's all the way. One of the things that somebody said in one of the talks was, you know, the the government structure in Canada is the feds have all the money, the provinces make all the rules, and the municipalities solve all the problems. And I found it really kind of interesting because, you know, it's very, when when Mr Barbo says we are a creature of the province, absolutely, we are absolutely controlled by the legislation that tells us what we need to do and how we need to do it. But a lot of the money, the funding from the federal level comes down either through the province or comes through, you know, specific project funding programs, which isn't great. They basically make municipalities compete against each other and beg at the table for scraps. So I thought that was one interesting point. But as Mr Barbo said as well, you know, I had the opportunity to meet with and speak with people from all over the country, from Vancouver to Alberta, to New Brunswick in Nova Scotia. And it's interesting that, you know, it doesn't matter where we are in the country. We're all dealing with very similar problems. Now, the legislation that governs us will be different from province to province, but only different in a limited kind of way. So I found it really beneficial to talk to people from across the country about the different ways they approach things, whether it's housing shortages or, you know, whether it's asset management and asset deficits. You know, we're all suffering from not enough money and too many responsibilities. And so that, to me, was also kind of very interesting part of the the trip for me. And it, you know, it just, like I say, goes to show you, it doesn't matter where we are from. It's all, you know, we're more alike than we are different. And the other interesting thing that I found was I had the opportunity to speak with people in other provinces who are on councils of municipalities that are smaller municipalities that are francophone. So, you know, I had a good, long conversation with mayor and a council from a small town in Manitoba and some of the challenges around preserving French language and culture when you're outside of Quebec. So it's that kind of national perspective. It is a little different than what you see at the provincial level. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, we can still participate in the conferences. We are still open to the funding. But I thought that the work that they were doing was good and valuable. And one of the ways that we can support that is through membership. And I think that there is value there for the municipality. That's my opinion. But it doesn't, you know, if council doesn't approve it, it doesn't prevent us from trying to access that anyway. So it's not. I'll leave you with that. Other questions? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Councillor Biewer?
Okay.
Ms. Madam Mayor, how much money do we spend on memberships?
Don't have that off the top of my head.
How many membership do we?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I think I indicated some of the association, the corporate association memberships, I think, were members of FUNO. I think we're members of Roma. We're members of OGRA and AMO. And AFMO, I believe, the French Association of Municipalities. So those are our corporate memberships. Some of the individuals in this room and elsewhere have professional memberships that allow them to gain the best information possible in their industry. I'm a member of the Ontario Municipal Administrators Association, which is an association of CAOs. Elisa is a member of the Association of Finance Officers, or whatever you call yourselves. I don't want to go with that conference.
It's great fun.
Anyway. We have some engineers or people that are members there to get the most updated information so we can pass that on to quality of service to our residents. So I'd suggest maybe seven or eight.
It's, it's probably a larger list than that, but some of them are really, you know, the, the, the wet, doing wet inspections and, and things like that. But some of them are very, are kind of really nominal amounts.
To the buyer, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we offer, municipalities offer a lot of services. Where, as the mayor indicates, you know, we, we provide services in a variety. We're the grassroots government. And so all of the different legislation and tech, you know, and expertise necessary to run that with the people that we have, they're usually affiliated with colleagues. So that's your question.
So what, but we, it would be nice to have a breakdown of how much we spend per those membership. And then, like you say, if I remember you, if you think it's valuable, but comparing to what it costs compared to another membership.
We can have that breakdown.
That's what council wishes, for sure.
So through you, Madam Mayor, the, the question is, is, I think it would be a resolution on the next meeting for discussion, whether it's this year or any alternative, it becomes a budget discussion, given the timing of when a membership runs from, which is the provincial or federal fiscal year, which is April 1st, right? So that you to decide today whether you want to be a member this year or if you want to ensure that budget deliberations next year.
We could, we would bring that back to council before next meeting and that information could be provided and, and vote on it at.
Certainly.
That way, the other members who are not here as well, if you're comfortable with that, it's still good, it gives each member of council some time if you wanted to do a little bit more research on the organization and what it does. And Ms. Craddock will get the information that councillor Heather Ryan has provided. And we'll bring it back at the next council for a final session of vote.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you very much. On to the next item. We have 5.1.3, which is our vehicle for hire bylaw update. There is a staff report included by Ms. Duchamp. And I can't remember the date, but councillor Tessier, myself, councillor Revard for most of it, attended for a public consultation meeting a couple of weeks ago, just to go over any input from either operators or the public on, on that. And I know councillor Tessier and I both provided some brief comments back to John with our notes. And I believe there's been a couple of minor tweaks made. Overall, the reception at the, at the public consultation, there was very little kind of buildup that was concerning. The, the only real big item was the timing for vehicle inspections. And outside that, could you want to give? Through you. Thank you. Would you like to give an overview on that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I think you pretty well covered everything. There were only a couple of questions raised. I did make an amendment to that section that was raised regarding the vehicle inspections. There's a little bit even still of cleanup that I have to do. Applications to prepare and set fine schedules to prepare. But other than that, unless council has any further questions or recommendations on the road. Right in front.
Okay, so the process from here on in, we'll have a discussion, get any feedback from council, and then it will go back to you. And the next time it would come back to us, it would have those forms. Or would it come back and be approved and then you create the forms of need?
It can be, it can run concurrently.
Okay, so you've had a chance to read through both the report and the proposed bylaw there. And with that, I would open the floor for questions and comments. Councillor Revard.
This is a quick one through you, Madam Mayor. I noticed it's crossed off Chief of Police that were municipal licensing issuers. Maybe I missed it, but is that the bylaw officer or will it be a designated stat?
And my apologies, first of all, the markup version wasn't the one I intended to be in there. So this was a, we took the North Bay's precedent. North Bay's taxi bylaws administered by the police service. So in our, we've substituted council and municipal licensing officer and bylaw officer appropriately where the police service would have carried out those duties in another jurisdiction.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Councillor Tessier?
Yes, Madam Mayor, through you. In the bylaw, that's the definition of broker. Just to verify, because it says means a person who accepts orders for, or dispatches.
Councillor Tessier, could you just give us the section number so I can look at it?
Page four, section 1.3 definitions. Part one. Broker means a person who accepts orders for or dispatches a vehicle for hire in which vehicles for hire are not owned by that person or that person's immediate family or employer. And just reflecting back on page 30 of 30, number, number two, the fee for a broker license does not cover the license fee for any vehicles for hire owned by the broker. So I'm just not sure if it is conflicting or it's in number three, in number two, paragraph two. At the bottom, where it describes the fee of a broker license does not cover the license fee for a vehicle for hire owned by the broker. If the broker is also an owner, the broker must pay the vehicle for hire owner license. But based on the definition, they should not be an owner of a vehicle. That's just where I'm confused. So I just don't know.
I, I, through you, Madam Mayor, I think you can be an owner and a broker.
But does the definition reflect that?
Well, owner has its own definition, broker has its own definition, so they're, they're mutually exclusive. You can be both.
Okay, maybe it's my interpretation, okay.
Sorry, I just, I'm reading.
It's just, I can just, I can explain.
Okay.
A, a broker is someone who basically takes care of vehicles that are owned by somebody else. They have to pay a broker fee for those vehicles. They also can own, and that would make them an owner of their own vehicles, but a broker for other vehicles. And there's fees payable for both.
So a broker can be an owner?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
All right, through you, Madam Mayor. I believe she's just, the definition would, would just have to be reworded a little bit if.
It's, I can, I can, I'll look into it and definitely try and make it, make it clear.
Thank you, thanks. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Councillor Heather?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just to go back, who would enforce all these, the bylaw officer? It used to be the police force.
Yes.
Does the bylaw officer have the, have the same power as the police to go check if he's done his safety check and stuff like this?
Yes, yes, because of some municipal bylaw. The bylaw enforcement officer has the power in order to, say, stop a marked vehicle and check for, drive a security check, check the license, check the insurance. And or go to that, the place of business if they have a stand, like some do, and go in and check on multiple vehicles. Also, there will be a list of set fines created as part of the bylaw and then submitted to be approved.
Yes.
And so the bylaw officer will also be, have the authority to issue tickets for offenses under the bylaw. So there, there is an enforcement mechanism built into it. And then as far as the actual issuing of the licenses, that will be done here at City Hall through our staff.
No, I haven't, I didn't go through the, the whole argument, I'll be honest. Is there a set number of licenses we issue? Is that coming up? It used to be, right?
Yes.
Now it's open?
Yep.
Okay.
So the free market will decide how many taxis can be supported and which ones give the best services and who the residents of West Nipissing choose to support. And that, that was kind of, I think when we were at the public consultation, we spoke very much about wanting a kind of minimalist, as little interference as possible in the, in the operations business. We're not setting out which hours they are allowed or have to operate or how many licenses will be issued. We are, the bylaw is being written to provide peace of mind for our residents that when they get in a vehicle from one of our licensed operators, that the drivers have been security checked, that the vehicles have been checked, and that there is valid insurance for other purpose of carrying passengers. So that was, that was kind of the approach that was taken, and that was it, it well received overall by the, by the providers who participated in the public consultation.
Does that include Uber?
It, it would. Through you, Madam Mayor. Uber would fall under the private transportation company provisions of this bylaw. They're in a little bit different category. They are much higher fees for them to be licensed to operate in a municipality because they have an online platform. So them, you ride, and I think there's.
Lyft.
Lyft, that's correct. So those ones, they're not vehicles for hire, they're private transportation companies.
So do they have to register with them in staff pay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good, as long as they're even playing field.
Probably more than even. They're probably actually incense local. And councillor Revard, sorry, unless, sorry, I'm not sure. Councillor Heather, did you have any other questions? I didn't want to cut you off, sorry. Councillor Revard?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We were just mentioning fees, fines for if they don't get it. An inspection's done on time and such. Would that fall under the bylaw? Because I don't see any numbers there. Would it fall under fee, fine? Like, is there a separate bylaw or would it be added directly into this bylaw?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we will, if the bylaw is adopted by council, we will prepare a set fine schedule for submission to the province.
Councillor McCall, did I see your hand? Are you going to go? Councillor Tessier, you want? Okay, so I, I think what you thought there, Mel, looks, sorry, excuse me.
It's okay.
Madam Mayor. Looks, looks pretty good. And, and it was interesting to see the, the business owners come out and participate in that consultation. So do you have what you need for the time being?
I do, thank you.
And so that will, that will come back in the future for approval. And I'll, sorry, Madame Duchamp will work through the process of doing the fines and the forms and all the other that goes into that. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, 5.1.4 is West Nipissing Not-for-Profit Housing Corporation. Again, the information is contained in your package, and I would like to pass that to Mr. Barbour.
Yes, I think this one actually came from me.
Thank you.
Affordable housing obviously is a topic that is very current, not just in West Nipissing, but all over. And the need for affordable housing is essential. So when we declared the land on Cozal Road near the Trax surplus, we declared a surplus to our needs. I since had a conversation with the administrator of the O Chateau and therefore administrator of West Nipissing Not-for-Profit Housing. And he did indicate to us that he would see a real need and find that location, as you indicated, Madam Mayor, as a good location potentially for developing more nonprofit housing. Mr. Dupree actually spoke and enlightened me, which, which is great. It's not a subject matter that I'm as familiar with with respect to some of the needs for single apartment type housing and accommodating P S Ws, which, you know, we're trying to recruit P S Ws, but they have nowhere to live and so on and so forth. So, and then the location of that, he, he thought would be ideal. So the memo is indicating that prior to listing it for sale, allow me and the corporation the opportunity to pursue and try and develop a little bit more, perhaps, a project or a plan with, with West Nipissing Not-Profit Housing. This may be in addition to what we're supporting with the administrative affairs or what we're attempting to do in August at A M O. But I, I think that, given the fact that one of our corporate partners has indicated an interest in working with us, what he's indicated to, and which is good for me, acknowledging that I don't know what I'm doing, he does. So, you know, our, our role here at the corporation would be the land. And his role would be, you know, the development and the maintenance of it, which, you know, it's kind of not a lot of work for us and satisfies one of this council's pillars, strategic pillars. So my recommendation again is to perhaps before listing it, pursue the opportunity and have a more fruitful discussion with the members of West Nipissing Non-Profit Housing and the administrator with our, our administration to see if we can develop some sort of a future plan. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I, I would just add to that, along with what Mr. Barbour said about, you know, single, single person dwelling units being in real short supply. I know I heard that a lot during the campaign, that people who have raised families with support of affordable housing and, and their children grow up and leave. And there's a real gap in supply for, say, the 45 to 55 crowd. So for the smaller apartments, whether they're located up in Chateau or the other developments around town, the minimum age is 55. Well, if you're 45, you know, there, there's not really a place for you. And it also, you know, we really are missing, if we want to attract our young people back from college and university when they finish their education and make them want to make their home in West Nipissing, they need places to go to as they start their careers. You know, perhaps before they're ready to enter the housing market as a purchaser. You know, small units that are suitable for single working age people is, is really a gap. And I think that was also identified in the, in the housing study that was done with the municipalities. So I would like that. And I'll open the floor to questions or comments. Councillor Revard?
I'll try, thank you, I'll try not to comment on everything tonight. But this one being in Ward 1, I've heard a lot of people just mention how it's an eyesore and such. I was wondering, is there any way anything could be done maybe for the fence in the meantime? Because I know this could probably be a lengthy process as well, right? So I was just wondering if that's an option.
Certainly we'll have a look at what we can do to clean up the property and look.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually appreciate that comment because I would think too, because it's not being used anymore, the fence actually is a little bit more of a safety risk because it hides the activity that would go on behind the fence and the property would probably be better off. It was unfenced and, and open to, open to view there. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions on this? Councillor Tessier?
So just a quick comment. I am in agreement 100% with what's being presented and continuing on the discussions. I know the Housing Corporation, we're not meeting until at least 20th of September or like early, like late September. But I'd be open, sitting as a member on the board to, to meet with beforehand because, you know, it takes a lot of time and the sooner we get at it, the sooner we can get our results.
That's great, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Do I need to show hands? Are we okay with then leaving the property just in a surplus state until we have a little bit more time to explore opportunities for that? All good? Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is five point one point five to capital project update. I will pass it to Mr. Barbo.
I will just make through you, Madam Mayor, a general statement that I made before. All municipalities are finding it very interesting and challenging to determine the appropriate pricing when we're budgeting. It would appear and we use, you know, we have our professional staff. We also use professional staff that are current. Yet this year we are having more and more difficulty and I must apologize to council. We were remiss in sharing some of the changes with respect to the capital budget that were that was approved. And that's my bad in a timely manner. And I understand a lot of councillors got some information on or information through the back door on Eugene Road as an example. So what I'd like to do is pass on because there are others. I'd like to pass the floor to our Director of Corporate Services who's responsible for and works with Public Works for in procurement when they're open and tender. So if Ms. Craddock might report, I'd appreciate it.
I can also get myself in the camera. I don't really want to be in the camera, but you know, it just seems appropriate. Yeah, so as Mr. Barbo said, and we did speak to council about a few specific projects kind of early as we were awarding things and early on, but we were kind of waiting for some of our big projects to come in and to see what would happen with our big projects. And so as Mr. Barbo said, and we just, you know, I think Mr. Remy had mentioned it briefly at the meeting out in Ruthman at Bill about Eugene Road Bridge. So the Eugene Road Bridge, as you can see, you know, we had three submissions. They were all fairly substantial, substantially over budget. And when we get bids that are all in the same range from a variety of contractors, then you kind of are feeling like that's what the market is right now as opposed to whether you sometimes you get one bid that's wildly out of line or you only get one bid and then you're really not so sure what the market really is. But we had the three bids come in in that range. So obviously it was it was not something that we could afford to do it this year and our engineer of Public Works feels that, you know, the we can delay the bridge work till next year. That will allow us to rebudget better for the capital based on sort of what we are now expecting for Eugene Road Bridge. The unfortunate part though is that they're also recommending the research delaying the resurfacing of Eugene Road Bridge to next year as well. Rather than doing all the resurfacing, having all the equipment, tearing it all up with the bridge and start all over again. So they are recommending that we delay the resurfacing of Eugene Road as well. Now, some of these are gas tax funds, some of it is sort of reserve funds. So that just means that money just carries over for these projects in the new year. We're obviously going to need to look for some when we look at our overall capital for twenty twenty-four. You know, it might be that there's less projects because our projects are all going to cost more, it appears. We ran into the same. We went out for bridges just for some of our smaller repairs. And so the John Street Bridge and LaFond Road Bridge both recently went out. And again, in this case, we only had one bid come back. And on both projects, again, fairly substantially over budget. There were some additions to the scope of the work on LaFond Road Bridge based on inspections that happened this spring. Sort of after, you know, our budget times, they sort of did some increased scope on the tender document before it went out. And again, in this case, it's a little bit more when you only have one bid, you know, is the bid reasonable? Is the bid not reasonable? Would we get better, more competitive bids if we were, you know, putting this out at a different time of year? Either way, again, we're looking at this, the point that, you know, we can't afford to do all of the bridge work. So again, the engineer is recommending that we delay the John Street Bridge. There's two reasons for that. One is that we've got all that other work going on out there right now. And so not to add congestion with the bridge as well. And the other is that all of our structures are inspected every other year. And so John Street Bridge is actually due for inspection this fall again. And so given that we're at this point already, let's let the fall inspection go through. Let's go through. Let's again, prepare better for next year, or it may actually be the following year to let all that John Street work finish before we get into the bridge. They are hoping to go ahead with the LaFond Road Bridge. And they have done some, you know, so some sort of verification on the cost, given the increased scope and such like that, that they feel comfortable recommending that the John, so the LaFond Road Bridge go ahead. You do have a resolution later in your package. In order to make the difference though, they're actually suggesting that we reallocate the funds that were originally laid out in the capital budget from the West McDonald Road Bridge. And that is also because on inspection this spring, after all the water had gone down, although that that bridge is actually in better condition than they thought it was when we added it to the capital. They think that likely a beaver dam actually broke somewhere along the way that allowed the water to drop and that the bridge is in much better condition than when we were looking at it last fall and getting ready for things. So when you see the resolution come through later this this evening for LaFond Road Bridge, that is under the assumption that the West McDonald Road Bridge is not going ahead, that we can delay that project for a couple of years at least. That that bridge is in reasonable condition and that we're going to address the LaFond Road Bridge. One of the ones that I mentioned kind of early in my preamble in the memo, but didn't go ahead with actually giving you your details on here, and I apologize for that, is the Front Street rehabilitation. And so we had been successful in getting connecting link funding to do some of the curb lane rehabilitation on Front Street. We were late in getting the, we built it into our budget, but we were late in getting the actual notice of of approval from the province. So we did go out late on that bid. Again, we only received one bid and we had about a million dollars in our budget and the bid came in at just over two. In this case though, we do feel that that the budget that we put out is not unreasonable still because we've had similar work done. There was bid along the John Street and we had multiple vendors bid along the John Street and the unit prices that this one contractor gave us for Front Street were substantially out of line. They certainly don't fit our budget. But that may be one of these things that might be more the reflection of taking a project out late in the year when all the contractors are busy and things like that. Now, the little bonus in that is that when we applied for the funding, we actually gave ourselves two construction seasons. So the funding still carries and we can do the construction next year. Because it doesn't fit in this budget year at that level, we've only got the funding for the sort of million dollars-ish of the project. Then then again, you know, what we would do is cancel the project right now. Take it back out to tender for a new budget year. We can get it out really early and see if it comes in. If again, if it doesn't fit within the budget, then we have to look at scaling that project and what the scope of that project is so that we can fit within the funding envelope that we have. It certainly has been a really interesting year. You know, I've been here a lot of years and we've not ever had problems this significant. You know, we've had, you know, maybe one project that, you know, will be out of line, but not have had the you know, over and over and over again with difficulties with projects. So like I said, it might mean changes for how we budget and the number of projects that we see in twenty twenty-four until we get a better handle on what is happening with the, you know, the local environment. The municipality through through Mr. Barbo and negotiations did actually manage to secure assistance from MTO in getting our sand in the field area for the winter, sort of dealt with again for a single year commitment. So this goes to the discussions that we had during budget on whether we needed to put that sand dome in or not put the sand dome in or what was going on in field. We at least have the one more year commitment to to give the municipality a chance to look at that options and and work out whether there is a different solution for us for field. The problem doesn't go away. We just bought ourselves some more time on looking at that issue. And I just sort of wrap up the memo by saying, you know, you know, council has recently passed the, you know, these policies that kind of dictate when reports come back. So all the Q two reporting will kind of be wrapped up this week. Unfortunately, getting Q two reporting to council early in July is really difficult. But we will get the Q two, both operating and capital, the sort of financial things of all this moving around at the next meeting for council's review at that time. I'll hand it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barbo?
Yeah, sure. On the sand dome issue through you, Madam Mayor, the mayor and I did attend and met with the minister and on the on leaving the room, a former director for Northeast Region is now the ADM and spoke briefly about the logic as per, I haven't forgotten Councilor Pellerin's comments on the sand dome. And having two sand domes nearby and just because you're two levels of government, I found, you know, to be a logical thing. And so we're going to try and work that out. And so I'm still working with them on that and seeing if we can try and find a solution where we don't have to spend that money there in the same in the same way. So that's still underway. The other thing I would add just from a general perspective is that it is our intention to set up budget discussions much earlier this year. And so we won't have obviously finals, but I think strategically, a lot of municipalities of our size or larger start their budget deliberations in the fall. And I think what that will do is provide more competition for our capital if we can get our capital approved earlier. And this council did a better job than some past councils of getting a budget approved in early April or late March. I forget what it was. But still, if we can get it done for three months, four months earlier and get our documentation out when our suppliers are not necessarily committed yet, I think that it'll help our cost. So I just want to add that.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from the members? Councilor Pellerin?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I guess I got a question and a suggestion.
Question first.
What was the cost of the resurfacing? Was it close to budget for Eugene Road?
I don't think we tendered it.
No, we didn't.
Because I don't think it makes sense. If we were going to have a bunch of equipment wrecking that road going to and fro on a brand new surface road, I don't think that would have been a logical discussion. So I I know it creates a discomfort for one year. But the professional recommendation from our staff would be to do the bridge first, then resurface the road. So we didn't tender it. Okay. That's not a recommendation?
My suggestion for the Eugene Bridge, it could be done even before the fall to do it for tender. Because I talked to the contractor that was doing Iowa sixty-four. They didn't put a bid in because it didn't fit to their timeline, which makes a lot of sense. So now that we have the money, we know it's got to be done. So as for the bids, maybe this fall, then the contractors know what they have for next summer, if you know what I mean?
I do. And on the face of it, through you, Madam Mayor, on the face of it, that's very logical and good common sense. What my concern would be is to go on the information of one contractor who may want to bid. And, you know, unfortunately, we need to be open, transparent and equitable in our procurement practices. So we would have to look at that. So I'm not saying that that's not something that we shouldn't pursue, but it's something that I'd want to have a little bit more discussion because we want to make the opportunity to bid on our work available to all. And so you said you had a conversation with one person who didn't bid and be willing to bid. I just have to get my head around that because and so would Lisa or Ms. Craddock on that.
Thank you. I count, sorry.
If I may add to that, the other does go back a bit to budget. And so, you know, we had budgeted about, you know, just higher that million dollars for that for the bridge. That million dollars is sitting in a little pocket for it. I don't necessarily have that other million dollars assigned unless we've gone through the whole process of, you know, capital of next year. So absolutely, if we can get budget done early and get some of that capital early so that we can go out for an early tender and then have it. But I don't have two million sitting in a pocket right now.
What Councilor Pellerin has indicated is perhaps there's an opportunity for getting it at or near the budgeted price. The problem is, what Ms. Craddock indicated is that we did have three bids competitively at double the price. So if we're starting to play the game and the sole sourcing on a tender, that's not legal. So we can't do it that way. And so if this individual wants to bid and give us a preferential price, hopefully the company would be willing to respond to a tender. Now, hopefully, we can get a tender out as early as possible. But it certainly
I didn't say he wanted to bid. I just said he didn't bid because it didn't fit to that timeline.
Right.
And it goes for other contractors too. So if we take, we know what's up. We know we need it and we've got almost a million dollars set aside right now.
Right.
So why not go early this fall? And the probably one of the reason it was so high too, because all the contractors are busy like hell. So if they're going to put a price, they're going to say, okay, if we do get it, it's going to pay.
Right. So no dispute. That's why we want to start our process a little bit earlier to get more competitive bidding to see if that's the case. I think I'd have to take it into consideration, but I think it would be a real interesting and scary dilemma to start piecemealing one project outside of the budget deliberation process when there's a variety of different needs and we don't know what the total budgeting will cost. So if we start piecemealing that outside of what council approves as a global budget for next year and and preapproving individual items, that could create another problem for us. So I think it's something that we would have to consider. My preference to be safe is to basically tender out as soon as possible. Hopefully, you know, November, if we can get capital approved for the following year is the best I think we can do. There's just rules.
No, I know, but like, we wouldn't be preapproving because we've got the budget for this year. Anyway, just saying.
But we may be asking for more in the budget to make sure it gets done. So if we, you know, if we bump our head in against the wall the second time and get the same result, you know, I don't know how the expression goes, but I, you know, I think you know what I'm saying. So if we need to put more money in it, I'd rather our experts say, no, it looks like the market is going to be going at. And even having these discussions publicly is kind of letting the public know what we're willing to spend as well. So but I think that we want to basically have a good thorough look at our budgeting, our capital, our estimations, our estimates, sorry, and come back to council with more up-to-date information based on the data that we have.
Councilor Rovar?
Through you, Madam Mayor. This is in regard to the John Street Bridge. I'm sure staff has taken this into consideration, but I know our Front Street Bridge will be redone. I was just wondering how it will be done because now if the John Street Bridge is pushed back here, it'd be nice to for sure get it done next year. Because I heard some people say that the Front Street Bridge was going to be sooner than later once funding is approved. So then one on both bridges can work done fairly close together. I don't know. I'm sure staff has taken a look at this, but that's why I was maybe thinking, is there a possible way to even get the inspection done earlier so that way we can budget for sure and for sure get the John Street Bridge done next year?
So you and I, I think some of the pre-work that's that is planned for the Front Street Bridge is in twenty twenty-four but not affecting traffic flow. And that the traffic flow effect that would be affected would be in twenty twenty-five if I'm not mistaken. Is that, am I correct?
I'm not sure on that timeline. I'm not even sure exactly.
I think that's what we presented to the minister. So what we're doing now is we're still speaking to the ministry officials to see if they would even take over the bridge. Because, you know, the delegation and the submission we made is that Because, you know, the delegation and the submission we made is that we're very good, we're, you know, but this is a lot for a small municipality to, not just financially, but in expertise, where the Ministry of Transportation, and they acknowledge that the Ministry of Transportation have different divisions within their engineering department that basically, you know, we have one person that does everything, they have five people in this sector, this sector, this sector. So we really want their assistance and they weren't, they were very receptive to that. In fact, waiting outside, the mayor and I were speaking to the person heading the connecting link program, who indicated to us that that bridge is the largest bridge in the connecting link system in Ontario. So they acknowledge, you know, most connecting link, they acknowledge that it's a big deal. And they understand the liability to the provincial taxpayers. So we just need to get together with them and and move forward.
I see. That's, that's good news. I hope they pay the whole thing. I guess for the John Street Bridge, I was just hoping that potentially that was a way to find that money this year, just to make sure they won't overlap at all, right? Those projects.
At this point, even if we were to try, I don't know that it would get done. I'm not sure about that. So we'd have to have a look at that. If council directs us to have a look at it again and find the 90, I think they also commented on the disruption on John Street right now as well, right? Because we have, I mean, there's certain work that's going to be done. But yes, you can turn right on Front or on King or Sun or Nakusana Woditchin Main.
Anybody else? Okay. So I guess with that item, we're just kind of getting the information from staff as an FYI. Councilor Revard or anybody else, of course, if there's ever anything that you want to bring back, like specific issue for discussion, there's a process by which you can do that. And of course, I'll help you with that process if you'd be. On that note, it is exactly 8 o'clock. So Madam Ashram, would you do the pleasure?
A moment.
Move her in a second, please, for recess. Councilor Tiscia and Councilor Revard.
Admitted by Councilor Tiscia and seconded by Councilor Revard, approximately 8:00 PM, emotions table for 10-minute recess.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Oh, that's it. Never mind. The one I was thinking, no, why did I think it was Dan? Thank you. You're ready? Okay, welcome back to our meeting. We're just back off of our intended recess. We're still in committee of the whole, moving on to Planning Committee. And for that, I will pass it to Councilor Tiscia, our chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Planning Committee, the 5.2.1 has been deferred till next August 15 for the update on proposed bylaw to regulate camping trailers. 5.2.2 backyard chickens. Am I correct?
Do you want me to?
I'll pass it on to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Included in your package, this is just a very brief and certainly not an exhaustive report regarding the subject of backyard chickens. It's indicated in my report, in the number of years I've been here, the, we get queries all the time regarding backyard chickens. Some municipalities allow them, some municipalities prohibit them. You know, some have instituted a bylaws, you know, that are fairly strict, some regulate them based on lot size. And I've given all that information in my report. The purpose of this is to simply find out whether council wishes to explore the options further, to do a more in-depth sort of investigation to bring back to council at a future date. Don't have an opinion, if we do pass a bylaw on them, you know, I think that there would have to be public consultation. I would be recommending that we certainly undertake some public consultation to find out what the what the local thoughts are on on the process. But because typically, the calls that we get are for those who are pro chicken. We don't hear often from the, from the no chicken people. I'll stop talking.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Pellon?
Yes, Councilor Tiscia, just, I guess that's the reason it comes up here. There's a lot of people regarding if they can.
Actually, Councilor Revard brought it up. He had encountered a number of queries during the course of his campaigning about the subject matter.
I, I did too. And I told him, there's no bylaw, but some chickens.
It's a bylaw.
Oh, there is a bylaw. I thought we didn't have a bylaw.
It's in the zoning bylaw.
We don't have a bylaw that regulates actual backyard chickens. We have a zoning bylaw that states you can't have agricultural activities, including the raising of poultry, in any other zone but rural or ag.
Oh.
I won't ask for that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair. So currently, it's permitted A1, A2, and RU. So, excuse me. Oh, you know. I'd be, can you, just as far as size of lots, can you specify the difference between RU and RR, please?
Typically, RR would be anything between an acre and 10 acres, and your RU would be 10 acres and above. Typically. There are smaller, there are larger.
And so right now, they're not permitted on RRs. We're residential.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Yes, Councilor Nichol? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment for everybody in the room. I believe that we should proceed with a public consultation first, as there are many properties within the urban areas that have adequate spacing for a chicken run and a coop. Typically, hens, they require three to five square feet per chicken in the coop, and then an additional 10 square feet each in the run. So to comfortably accommodate all six hens you potentially could have, you'd only need 90 square feet at most. And that's about 0.002 of an acre, if my math was correct earlier. With the cost of food prices changing, having the opportunity to supply your own eggs could offset it, not to mention the educational benefits for you and your family. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilor?
I just have a comment, kind of echo Councilor Nichol's comment being brought forward. I would prefer just having public consultation first to kind of, you know, gauge the, gauge the resident, gauge the public, and then move from there. I know from growing up, we had some chickens, we slaughtered them on site, we'd freeze them, and we, you know, that was what we did. Now, knowing now that under the zoning bylaw, it's not permitted under my R1 designation, I wouldn't go about in, you know, getting some chickens now. But it'd be kind of interesting in terms of, you know, seeing what the public has to do, has to say, and then moving on from there.
Any other comments or questions? So it's, just put it, yes.
Sorry, I would agree that public consultation.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
It would be good. So, you know, not not to make any, I mean, public consultation is still some some work for our staff, but you don't need to start drafting bylaw till we kind of get an idea. Because as, as Mel said, oh, sorry, as Madam Turk said, you know, we hear from the people who want the chickens. But when faced with the idea of chickens and their neighbors back here, there might be a little bit more input from residents who don't want that as part of their lifestyle. We want to make sure that that the pros and cons from everybody are being heard. Councilor, could she and the Councilor Nichol?
Yes. So I just want to confirm that direction would be to bring a resolution to the next meeting of council, authorizing staff to undertake the public consultation on the subject of backyard chicken.
Okay, all of the agreement. Show our hands, please.
Thank you.
And roosters.
Send you the one that lives nearby.
Now, moving on to the next item. Moving on to the next item. 5.2.3, transfer of Sandy Island road allowance. Pass it to madam Bishan.
Thank you, madam chair. This is kind of complicated, and based on a request received from the solicitor for Monsieur Malo, over the course of Sandy Island, there are, I think, four or five separate subdivision plans registered on that island. The one in question is the one on the most easterly portion of the island wherein the roads in the actual plan were not dedicated to the municipality. However, in the course of the transition from paper title books to electronic registration, the land registry office has placed those roads at the east end of the island in the name of the public authority having jurisdiction, which is us. Mr. Barlow, through his solicitor, is requesting that the municipality reconvey these lots as they were improperly placed, in their opinion, improperly placed in the municipality's name. And so that's basically what they are asking for. And I did speak with her worship earlier today, and I, just for clarification, there really are no roads on Sandy Island. Their road allowances that have never been developed are not open and don't provide any access to anywhere. I'm done.
Any questions or comments? And if there's no questions or comments, then are we in agreement to?
Okay, I will ask a question. There's no, is there, there's no benefit to the municipality in keeping these? RU, madam chair?
Thank you, sweetie madam chair. Since there are no roads, they're not open, there's no development, so there's, in fact, probably reconveying them would remove liability from the municipality, because then the property that they're on would not be our responsibility, if anything were to happen on it.
Yes.
Question, is there any impact? Would there be any impact of this transfer on the lots that, above this road allowance? Like, were any of them consulted? Like, you know, would you have put out a notice to any of the property owners where that, I know there's no road?
Sweetie madam chair, no. No public consultation or notification has been undertaken. If that's something that council would, I don't see any benefit. I think it might be.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
She has to say.
Yes, councillor Rivard.
Thank you, councillor Tissier. Councillor Tissier. Just this one lot in the middle, I was wondering, is that owned by the people requesting? Because that would be landlocked.
That is correct. That is owned by the requesters.
Okay, thank you.
So, I do have a question. So, the red line is what?
It's just the road allowance.
Road allowance, but if we remove that, like, the property lines or all that doesn't change, right? Whatever, so it's just kind of?
No, through, you are madam chair. The road allowance itself will remain in place. It's physically on the plan. It'll simply not be in the municipality's name, it'll be in the name of the owners.
Thank you. So, the recommendation is to remove the municipality's name on that road allowance? To put it to the owners?
Yes.
Okay.
The resolution will come for the next meeting of council. So, just, we're all in agreement, there's no issues with that request? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Back to you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, and the, oh, yeah, the last item that we'll be discussing in committee of the whole is under our community services committee, and for that, I will pass that to councillor Rivard, who's our chair.
Thank you, madam mayor. So, there are community services, 5.3.1, ice fees for non-local youth. At our last meeting held in Monetteville, the question came up about how much ice time was rented out to non-local youth teams, and they were, the proposals to charge the same as the adult local ice fee here in the municipality, so that's what it was, if I'm putting it like that.
Mister Chair, you've summed it up. As per the brief memo, we look back a couple of years prior to COVID as well, and we generally, throughout a season, will rent approximately 30 to 35 hours to outside local youth teams. So this gives council an idea, because councillor Restil did request that information. So if council were to decide to raise that rate by, let's say, $10 an hour, then you know the additional revenue that potentially the municipality could get. And one of the points that was made during your discussion the last time as well is, although we are less expensive than other municipalities for ice rental, we still want to be in a position where teams from North Bay Sudbury will want to travel to our region to rent ice and have hockey games, because it does have an impact on our local businesses as well.
Thank you. So I'll open up the floor. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, through you, Mister Chair. I do wish councillor Gagne was here tonight, because he was, I thought the same thing, and brought it up. I do like the idea of having a minimal difference, whether it's $10 an hour, mostly because I do feel like our residents should pay less than non-residents, one way or the other, and that's, perhaps it's not extinct, but, you know, that was kind of the way I thought about it, and I believe that was councillor Gagne's position when he brought it up as well, is that, you know, we get an outside group, some of our residents subsidize our community services through the paying of their taxes, and so I like the idea that they pay at least a little bit less than a non-local group. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. What else? I would just like to mention that I'm actually on the other side, where I believe the fee should probably stay the same as what was presented, just because it keeps us a little bit more competitive. The change, to me, it wouldn't have much financial difference, maybe 300, $400, even going up $10, and then this way, it might help us compete, because we do have a nicer arena than some of our smaller neighboring communities, just my opinion. So, that's, West Nipissing Falls and the Verner Arena, I believe, are some nice rinks that maybe we could attract, even if our cost is slightly higher than, you've got the Warren, St. Charles, Noelville, they have a pretty nice rink. But if we go up too high, then those teams might just decide to play their catch-up games somewhere else, because this is often why people would come to our communities, a catch-up game where maybe a snow delay caused it, so then they can't use their rink in North Bay, and then they're forced to find a rink somewhere. Or you also have, like, girls' teams, where they come from, Blind River is going to be playing, Mada was an example, they try and find something central so that they can both play. So we still want to remain somewhat attractive to host those games, because like you said, it does help our community, they stop at restaurants, maybe hotels, etc. Thanks. But I also like that, that I do play men's league hockey, it would be nice that I don't pay as much as other towners, but at the same time, I pay my fee and I forget about it. Sorry, the season's going.
You're carrying.
I don't know where to go now, because there's only two comments.
Yeah, so basically, you know, general consensus from the group? Do we want to stay with what was recommended by staff at the last meeting, which is the same fee for non-local groups as for our, or, sorry, non-local youth as for local adult groups, or whether council supports a slight raise? So it's just, it's one or the other.
So, I'll start with the, I'll start with the, if we remain at what was presented to council at the last meeting, by a show of hands, who would be in support of that? Let's hope.
Same.
That's that for community services.
Good job, councillor Rivard.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Just, I believe because that section was not approved essentially at the last meeting, we omitted that ice rate as part of our resolution this evening. Could we potentially amend the resolution to include that, so that all of our ice fees would be set? If not, if not, that.
You're asking a procedural question? Yep. Sorry, procedurally, you could, and I would.
So, once the resolution is there, somebody will propose the amendment.
I, myself, I feel a little, I know we still have to pass things with quorum, I just, I still, I feel weird with three of us, so that's my bad, I have to get open. So, yes, procedurally, we can do that. Okay. Okay, and then there was one item under water turn that's been moved through the August 15th meeting. So, with that, we'll move into the regular portion of our meeting. First item on the agenda is our consent agenda.
It is moved by councillor Pere and seconded by councillor Rivard. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for July the 11th, 2023, be approved as presented.
Thank you. So that includes the council minutes from the June 20th and the health unit minutes from April 26th. All those, sorry, questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Carried?
It is moved by councillor Rivard and seconded by councillor Pere. It is resolved that bylaw number 202360 being a bylaw to amend by law 201960 to regulate traffic and parking in the West Nipissing municipality, be approved as presented.
Okay, just as a reminder, pressure, that was having a stop sign on the southbound corner at Park and Abbey. Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carried?
It is moved by councillor Pere and seconded by councillor Rivard. Whereas council received the amended ice allocation policy at the June 20th, 2023 meeting, be it therefore resolved that the ice allocation policy be approved as presented, and be it further resolved that the amended ice allocation policy shall form part of the West Nipissing policy manual.
So, the copy of the policy is included. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried? Thank you.
It is moved by councillor Rivard and seconded by councillor Pere. Whereas council for the West Nipissing municipality reviewed the amended ice rental fees during June 20th, 23, and August, July 11th, council meeting, and whereas council is in agreement with the recommended fee increases, be it resolved that the following ice fees and hourly rental rates and program fees scheduled be adopted as presented.
Councillor Rivard, motion to amend.
Which one? Oh, this one, this one. A motion to amend the ice rental fees that was, that we talked about at the last meeting to what we just added just a few moments ago.
Seconded.
I'll see you.
So, that would just be the proposal that was presented at the June 20th meeting?
Correct.
In the initial staff memo, with the adult, sorry, you, non-local.
It's given for non-local youth.
Yeah.
Through you, your worship, but you're voting on the amendment first?
First.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the amendment's been put in, as is discussed, so questions or comments on the amendment only? All those in favor? Carried? And then we're back to the original motion, which is to pass the overall ice rental fees as amended. As amended. Questions or comments? I almost typed it there. All those in favor, please? Carried? And your.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor Koshain. Whereas tender for the LaFond Bridge repairs was opened on June the 26th by the Public Works Project Supervisor and the Director of Corporate Services, and whereas one submission was received, be it resolved that the tender for the LaFond Bridge repairs in the West Nipissing municipality be awarded to LUA Construction for the sum of $68,000 plus HST.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried?
It is moved by councillor Koshain and seconded by councillor Tissier. It is resolved that council authorizes an exemption of the municipality's noise bylaw 199975 for the following dates and locations. 191 Third Street, August 11th, 2023 until 1 a.m. 131 Burgos Street, August 19th until 1 a.m. And 37 Schmaine-Cancore, September 23rd, 2023 until 1 a.m.
Okay, questions, comments? Yes, councillor Rivard?
Through you, madam chair. Just one comment I noticed is one of the noise bylaws, I'm checking, it's for a surprise birthday party, so.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Surprise! Okay, all those in favor? Hands, thank you, carried.
It is moved by councillor Tissier and seconded by councillor Koshain. Be it resolved that the equipment described here and be declared a surplus to the West Nipissing municipality, and be it further resolved that council hereby authorizes the disposal of the following surplus equipment, a 1974 Gondier tractor with attachments, and a 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe.
Okay, questions or comments on that? Councillor Pere.
Yes, a quick question maybe for Alicia. Last meeting, there was some surplus. Is this all going to be together?
So, these might just be at the scrap level, but the other ones will go out for tender, but both of the equipment might be past their lifespan.
The tractor, it's not going to go for bits?
It was one that they formed as, might be more suitable as scrap metal than as a bit. We, you know, I can put it out with the rest, as is where is, you know, I can put it out with the rest, yeah.
That's the one, is the switch plant?
It is, yep.
Put a minimum bit on it. Get it? The scrap?
Okay, any other questions or comments?
All those in favor? Carried, thank you.
Oh, thank you. It is moved by councillor Koshain and seconded by councillor Tissier. Whereas at the July 11th, 2023 meeting, council received a request from Le Fidèle Zabel requesting financial assistance from the municipality of West Nipissing to be applied towards their leasing responsibilities for the year 2023. Be it therefore resolved that council authorizes the financial contribution of $3,600, being $300 per month, for Le Fidèle Zabel to be applied towards their operational costs for the year 2023.
I'll just give you just a brief background on this, because it's kind of come out. I stopped in at the bake sale that Le Fidèle Zabel was having on Friday, and was talking to one of the lovely ladies there, and mentioned something about the municipality helping with their rental costs, and she said, "Not this year." And I said, "Pardon?" Anyway, it turns out that a letter requesting support was sent last August, but in the transition and the election period and other things that were going on at the time, it's, I don't believe it made it into the hands of our staff in order to look at. So she resent the letter, that was sent, it's traditionally been a group that the council has supported, and in talking to Mavivis, you know, the work that they do in the community is really impressive. They're in a much nicer, bigger store now, and she told me that they're spending approximately $6,000 a month. on groceries and food and supplies to help people who are in need. So we often don't see firsthand the work that comes out of the store and what they do there, but it has a great impact on the members of our community that rely on them to, for, to help make ends meet. So that's kind of why this is here now. And I would propose that because there has been a lapse in the municipality's support, which the last payment went out December?
It was for the period of December 2022.
2022 that this approval from council, if approved, be retroactive for January, February, March, April, May, June, because it is something that was in the budget. And it was an expected expense, because it is a cause that has been supported by the municipality for many years. Questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor, carried?
It is moved by Counsel Tissier and seconded by Counsel Gershain. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202361 being a bylaw to close the public road known as part of Lego Street in the West Nippising municipality, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, so this is, dates back a couple of months now, to the property in River Valley that was looking to add. So just to refresh everybody's memory where Lego is. And the next motion, that same, same item. So any questions or comments in regards to this motion? Okay, all those in favor, carried?
It is moved by Counsel Gershain and seconded by Counsel Tissier. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202362 being a bylaw to authorize the transfer of land legally described as part of Lego Street, Plan 36M527, Part 1, Plan 36R1015088 in the township of Khorar, to Daniel Giroux, for the sum of $4,500 plus HST.
Again, that was discussed previous council, so staff has gone through and done all the work on the legal end, finally, is that simple? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, carried? Thank you. Oh, is that it?
No, motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so we've got one more item on the agenda here, under Notice of Motion, and that is Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation Housing Accelerator Fund. It came through a recommendation from our Economic Development Committee. Counselor Gershain, would you like to speak to that all, or shall I? Oh, what's that? You need to read the notice? Wonderful, I will let Madame Bird read the notice.
It is moved by Counsel Gershain. May I have a second, please? Counsel Tissier? It is moved by Counsel Gershain and seconded by Counsel Tissier. Whereas at a meeting held on June 22nd, the West Nippising Economic Development Advisory Committee adopted a motion recommending to council to apply for funding through the Canada Housing Corporation... Canada, okay. Canada Housing Corporation Housing Accelerator Fund. And whereas a housing strategy was developed to respond to ongoing and amplifying housing challenges. And whereas a land development strategy for the former mill site has also been developed and encompasses a housing component to respond to ongoing housing challenges. And whereas the CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund provides a real opportunity for the municipality of West Nippising to reach its housing goals. And whereas the West Nippising municipality is an eligible applicant under the CMHC program, be it resolved that council for the West Nippising municipality authorizes the Director of Economic Development and Community Services to submit a funding application to the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation's Housing Accelerator Fund to support housing in West Nippising.
Thank you very much. Did you want to add anything to the motion, or shall I pass it to Mr.? What, get it? I have thought. No, you don't. Did you want to add anything to that, Counselor Gershain? Or would you like me to pass it to Mr. Brubow for comment?
No, the only thing, I think, that was just a slight mistake. So it's Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation for the first recital.
It's just a takeoff.
Yeah, so that was the only thing that I think the notice of motion kind of is self-explanatory. So we met with the Economic Development Advisory Committee in June, was a recommendation that was discussed and adopted. So considering timing and the short window of applications, I think if I'm not mistaken, it closes August 18th. And there's a variety of projects, either with the housing corporation that the municipality can help and assist, and whether it's helping the municipality with some run-above costs, you know, separate to the housing that involve, you know, community and infrastructure services, too. Those are all, you know, good opportunities that we can, I think we can...
Thank you very much. Brubow?
Well, the only added thought, as I'm in conversation very late today, and I have to report tomorrow, it would appear if I read through the lines that in order for us to assist or to get our delegation with Minister Clark for Municipal Affairs, there was a not-so-subtle question asking if we applied for the fund or if we're intending to apply for the fund. So I assume the favorable, approving this resolution and applying to the fund to assist the West Nippising not-for-profit corporation in their endeavor as we applied for our delegation would be well-received by the minister. So my recommendation would be to approve this resolution and to work with Mr. Dupree and the board, but through their administrator, to get the information that's already been developed from last year, which would make the application much easier for us this year. So my recommendation is to apply towards that. They, as I indicated earlier in this meeting, they have the expertise in portable housing. And so I believe partnering with them on this, in this case, would be the application that we would go for.
Questions, comments? Dupree, all in favor? Good, Carrie, thank you. And with that, we come to the end of the meeting. Just as a quick report, I will mention that Sturgeon Falls Market is happening again this weekend. The information, so Saturday, July 15th, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Homestyle of Sturgeon. There's 72 vendors, including food and entertainment, rain or shine. So it always is great to see all the wonderful creations of our local artists, artisans, and vendors. I encourage you all to go out and take a visit with that. And I don't think that there's anything else I'd like to add. With that, I would have Madame Bird ready for the tour.
It is moved by Counsel Tissier and seconded by Counsel Gershain. Be it resolved at the meeting of council held. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202363 being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on July 11th, 2023, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, all those in favor, carried?
It is moved by Counsel Tissier and seconded by Counsel Gershain. Be it resolved at the meeting of council held on July 11th, 2023, be it carried?
All those in favor, carried? Thank you, good job, everybody.